October 19th, meeting to order at 7:00. All members are present and the first time in is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. At this time we have public comments. Remember you have three minutes. All comments are addressed to the chair and I ask everyone to give their name and their address or if they're township resident and remember the person who does the minutes, they're not in the meeting, so make sure you speak into the microphone. Is there any public comments at this time? This is the time, if anyone has any public comments?
Hello, Alicia Dyer, Ipsy Township President. I just wanted to say thank you. I know the speed bumps are set to come in on Nash and I think that was, it's really awesome, so I'm glad that that is going on. And then I also wanted to let the board know, so our Y-Town ARPA group that we started, we have a meeting next Friday on the 29th at 7:30. It's going to be on Zoom and so we welcome anyone on the board if you want to come so we can hear your thoughts or feedback and just kind of meet and talk about how we can work together as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the chair.
I have two to read in the record. Sorry, that's what it is. I have two public comments to read into the record. One is from Ms. Joanne McCollum. She said, "Hello Heather, I just want to thank the board for their continuous support and help for the township. I like how we work as a team on getting things done." And she's the president of the New West Willow Neighborhood Association. And then I have one other. It is from Ms. Taj Lee-Hatch and it says, "Good evening. Many of you may know me as an Ipsilene Township Park Commissioner, but tonight I am speaking to the Sugarbrook resident. My husband and I purchased our home in Sugarbrook three years ago and in that time we have seen an increase in gun violence. This is not an every once in a while thing. There have been drive-by shootings on my street and in my neighborhood, entire clips emptied into homes, people killed at our parks, our neighborhood pages filled with posts asking if someone else heard the gunshots. Every year there is another young person who tragically loses their life to gun violence and it is devastating every time. My heart breaks for young people who are killed and the people who are responsible and their families and everyone affected. Not everyone knows someone who's died to gun violence, but probably everyone in Sugarbrook does. Probably everyone in West Willow does. I know I do. We can't keep letting this happen. At some point we have to sit down and put our heads together and figure out how we can create change, but we need you for that. There's no denying that gun violence is increasing, especially in the eastern part of the township. I know the township cares about all of our residents and we need your support. We need structural changes to create lasting impact. I know a huge issue of many of our youth don't have enough to do. There's a critical shortage in programming for youth between the ages of 13 and 18 and beyond. The ages of about 12 to 22 are absolutely integral to shaping the trajectory of a child's future. Imagine if we had opportunities available for the 50 and Beyond program but accessible and focused on youth. Imagine if we had educational and enrichment activities along with a meal, but at a low cost for our low-income and food insecure residents. Over 50% of children in Sugarbrook live at or below the poverty line. Sugarbrook is a food desert. We have access to the services we have available to our residents and change based on need. We need you. I call upon the board and our treasurer, Mr. Eldridge, to look at the budget and assess how more funding can be allocated to providing recreational and other support services with a low-cost option to residents between the ages of 12 to 22. ARPA funding used to address these issues would be great, but I hope the township can commit to permanent funding out of the general fund. This would literally save lives. I'm happy to discuss further and put together a focus group with residents in the impacted areas. There's no shortage of people who'd like to see the changes. We appreciate your help and support in this matter. Thank you Supervisor Stumbo. Respectfully submitted, Taj Lee-Hatch."
All right, thank you. Now we have the consent agenda, which is minutes of the September 21st work session, regular meeting and October 5th work session.
So moved Gerald Rowe.
Support Peterson.
Motion, support Peterson, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Statements and checks. We have statements and checks for October 5th, statements and checks for October 19th, clarity healthcare deductible for September and clarity healthcare administration fee for September, as well as a treasures report that's in the packet.
So moved.
Support Peterson.
Motion Eldridge, support Peterson to approve the consent agenda? Are there questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Attorneys report? Mr. Winters?
Yes, Minister of Chair, as it just read into the record by trustee Rowe, clerk Rowe, these are definitely some of the most challenging times that I can recall during my tenure as the township attorney. While there's a lot of great positive things that are still happening and energy that's being created, I cannot recall a time, recent memory anyways, where there are so many things happening simultaneously. And when I say simultaneously, I'm referring to maybe not the most legal phrase, but basically there are so many things that are just quote off the hook right now, it's hard sometimes to know just where to begin. What I'm referring to right now is, it probably comes down to what we've been trying to do for years now, holding everyone accountable for their actions, whether they're a business owner, a single-family homeowner, but in this case, we've seen apartment complexes that just seemingly are just absorbing just every ounce of our energy at a time that is just, it's reached a point where it's just absolutely unacceptable. I'm referring to what's gone on for the last two, three years at Aspen Chase Apartments over here off of Gulfside. We have a meeting scheduled with their management and their attorney on Monday. We're just going through the last 18, 20 months of calls for service. We've had nearly 2,300 calls for service to that one apartment complex. What is especially irritating, at least to me, is that there has been, there is currently a gatehouse at that community. In fact, the zoning board of appeals actually approved that gatehouse in 2004 for some of the very same reasons that we are experiencing today, to provide security. If someone is coming in that doesn't live there, they have to check in at the gatehouse, give their name, number, who they're visiting. While residents that are living there have a key pass to go in, sit in another lane so they're not held up, that's not being utilized. That has to be utilized, that's part of the site plan. Same thing here in Heights and here in Ridge, over here off of La Forge. We have a very detailed development agreement that goes back to 1997 that also requires residents to have a key-activated pass to come into that complex. We had a shooting there last night. Don't know if the gentleman passed away yet or not, but he was in critical condition. We got apartments over here like Village Grove that are just absolutely saturated with roach infestation to such an extent that they've called in outside contractors to address this issue. According to an email I received this evening, they have in fact also have sewage backing up into one of the apartment buildings over there. And I could go on and on and on. And so what I'm trying to lead up to right now is that the township's full-time officials really are being slammed right now like I've never seen it before in terms of everything happening at one time. And you can't let your guard down for a second because if you, you know, but at the same time you're trying to juggle things in the air, prioritize and reprioritize. And I really am probably, and you see it in the letters, you see the letters that go out to all of you, kind of putting this into context, but sometimes it's hard to put the emotion and the actual feel into the letters that we're experiencing day in, day out. Just recently, we also are dealing with the Galton Village. Just recently, I think even as of today, the chief building official did confirm that that shopping center has now been boarded up and been secured. It remains to be seen just how long that will be secured and boarded up, but at least that has been accomplished as of right now. It's not the image we want to have for the township, to have a boarded-up shopping center, but when you have, in this case, a gentleman who doesn't really care about the community, then that's what shows, and it's what shows. We have issues going on with the Ipsilene Community Schools and how they have leased and repurposed some properties into tenants without getting approval. And I'm referring to what you probably have seen as the so-called play at the cage. So again, whether it's zoning, whether it's neighborhood stabilization, whether it's issues pertaining to day in, day out, I just want to take a moment and just recognize the township's, you know, full-time officials for all the things and administrative staff. Everybody's getting slammed at one time, there's no question about it. But I don't want to end just on that note because clerk Rowe, after listening to some of these things this week, she did ask the question, "Well, how have you, how do you maintain your endurance for this position after all these years with all the things that are going on?" And so that was a good question to ask, you know? And so I was thinking, you know, this past September, I asked Lisa to put on the screen. This is a picture of the, on the township properties. And even though we did our best to, I said we, people did their best to try and create coverage as to what was going on by the placement of the crosses, I'll let Brenda address that issue because all the people on the township board, many of them and staff, all participated. The purpose behind those crosses is that the month of September is suicide awareness month, I believe. And the Vietnam veterans, they are placing out, they place out every September 22 crosses per day, which represents the veterans who commit suicide every day in the United States. And that particular Vietnam memorial over there means an awful lot to a lot of us here because it'll be 30 years this November 10th that the Vietnam Memorial was built, was dedicated. And there's four names of young men on that wall that I actually grew up with, that I went to school with and who lost their lives in Vietnam. And, but the memorial itself reads as follows, "To honor and remember all Vietnam War veterans from Washington County. They answered our country's call and served honorably at a time and in a place that divided our nation. They did what they thought was right. May they never be forgotten." But then the next paragraph here is what really hits home in regards to these crosses. "Remember those who returned and lost the struggle here at home, those who still wage a battle long forgotten by all others, and especially these men who made the supreme sacrifice or are still missing in action. Remember them all." And so my only point right now is, to answer Heather's question that I can do, is I know that every township board has its own personality and it has its own legacy and this board will have theirs as well, but the one thing that does keep me, you know, going and endurance is that every board member, every boards that I've served on or served with as the attorney, they've all had a deep passion about the community. They had a deep passion for people who live here. They have a deep concern for those who do struggle and they do have a deep passion to remember the veterans who gave everything they had at such a young age to, that we take, sometimes we all take for granted. And the only part of this that makes me really sad is that seeing these crosses and seeing township officials putting them up every day, then at the end of the month, taking them down and not being able to have any coverage in regards to what was going on here and what the suicide awareness actually was for. And we have a country that says they care about mental health, emotional health, but yet we have 22 veterans every day that are committing suicide. So you can, you can get coverage when someone wants to grow marijuana in their basement in violation of a township zoning ordinance, you can get all kinds of coverage on media about that, but you can't get coverage on something like this. And so, but that doesn't mean that you stop doing what you're doing because it's the right thing, we know it's the right thing to do, but I just want to take a moment and acknowledge that a lot of people did go by there, a lot of people did take videos, a lot of people did take pictures of this, and I'm just very, very proud of the township board and all the administrative staff and employees who also assisted in this endeavor because it just shows how much you care about the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. He's correct. We tried to get all the news outlets and they wouldn't, they didn't come out and do a story and I don't know why, but we'll keep trying, that's all we can do. But the veterans are very thankful how our, the township and the community support them in this event. And they started lighting it, every year it gets better. They have little lights now and they're getting more and more volunteers from the community, so, but every day, the veterans, for 30 days, are out there in case people don't show up. So they're, it's amazing. And we always go out just to say, "We're here in case anyone doesn't show up because we want to do it for them." They're going to actually move it, they picked it up from here and moved it to Howell. And so they're increasing it. It's the first one in the state that I'm aware of. They came and asked us to help with this awareness because it's also for community awareness, so people know they're not alone. If they're with suicide or mental health or struggling, you're not alone, there's a lot more people with you. And then they have resources too on their website. So it's just a great project and thank you Doug, we are proud of it. It'll be 30-year celebration, November 10th here. Is it the 11th or the 10th?
10th.
So you're welcome to attend that as well. At 5:00. Thank you. And under new business, we have the first reading of Resolution 2123, which is proposed ordinance 21497 and ordinance to rezone 1441 Russell Street from its current RM to multiple family residential district zoning classification to light industrial district zoning classification with voluntary conditions in writing by the applicant. And we have-
Yep, good evening.
-director, planning director Jason Ikeangeli.
Yep, good evening, Board of Trustees, Jason Ikeangeli, the township's planning director. I wanted to just take a few moments to go through the project briefly with you so you have a little background understanding on what's being asked of you this evening. R&amp;L Carriers facility that's located at 43 Emrick is requesting a conditional rezoning. A conditional rezoning is a rezoning where the applicant provides a set of conditions to the township that they would be willing to accept in response to the township giving them a favorable rezoning to the district that they need to be rezoned to. In this case, R&amp;L Carriers is looking to do a 56,000, roughly 57,000 square foot addition to their current facility, along with a truck washing station and a truck repair station to their existing site. As a part of this, they were able to acquire a piece of multiple-family residential property that abuts up towards Crestwood and Russell. And as a part of the rezoning, they offered the township a set of conditions towards a potential rezoning that they would agree to, which are enshrined in the conditional rezoning agreement that you have before you. And I'll go over that just briefly as well. So the conditions that were tied to the site plan that was approved by the planning commission in October of last year, October 27th, 2020, the conditions that were put forth voluntarily by the developer are that the existing parcel formerly zoned RM2 will not contain any buildings or driveways, that the open detention basins and landscaping will occur in the existing partial, existing parcel formerly zoned RM2. So this is the property that is right adjacent to the apartments. A minimum pavement set back of 80 feet is provided on the south side of the property and a 20-foot, 20-foot minimum by ordinance, so they've provided a larger buffer zone around the parcel than would typically be required by the ordinance. A variable width buffer of existing woods will remain as depicting on the site plan. 30 additional landscape buffer trees will be provided beyond the ordinance requirements along the east and south property lines adjacent to single-family residential. And that Minion Drive will be improved to the township's engineering design standards at the cost to be borne by the developer. So they've, these are conditions that the developer put forward as a part of this request to rezone from RM2 to I-1. And so what you have before you this evening is a resolution and an ordinance, as well as the conditional rezoning agreement, which again enshrines these conditions in it, as well as other, other development items, specifically guarantees for Minion Drive is one of the items that's been issued. The site plan is attached to this as an exhibit. Some of the other exhibits are a memorandum of understanding regarding Minion Drive, along with the cost opinion, has also been provided by the applicant. And then there'll be, so again, the folks from R&amp;L Carriers this evening are here to also answer any questions that you might have, but again, this project is for the expansion of an existing facility. We've worked with the developer extensively, especially with issues regarding sound. We, the applicant was one of the only developers that we've had provide us with, an actual sound impact assessment was done as a part of this project. And because of that, the planning commission had a set of conditions, including a sound barrier that will be installed or a sound wall that will be installed as a part of this development. And then again, the multiple-family property that they're asking to rezone from RM2 to I-1 will not have any new buildings on it and it will have, the detention ponds will be a part of that property, so it will just be used to accommodate stormwater. There won't be any pavement or facilities on that property. So at this time, I know there are some gentlemen here this evening from R&amp;L Carriers that would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and then I'll be available to answer any questions you might have after they're done giving their brief slide presentation.
Okay, yeah, we'd love to hear from you.
Stan Richards from Wilmington, Ohio. Madam Supervisor, Board Trustees and committee members, thank you so much for the opportunity. This has been a long project for us, but they all are. It's very challenging sometimes to get projects done with everything that's involved, so we're certainly looking forward and excited, excited about this opportunity. As you can see by the slides, this is a service center expansion. Because of the market and because of what we're experiencing in the trucking industry today, we currently have 39 facilities that we're either doing a major expansion, like we're doing in Ipsilene, or we're doing new buildings. So that's unheard of. You won't hear FedEx, you won't hear UPS, none of the other trucking companies, you won't hear hardly anybody, not even Amazon saying they've got 39 new projects in construction as we speak. Next slide please. So there's, that's our mission statement and basically it talks about our commitment to the community, commitment to our customers, and then the fact that we just want to be a good neighbor. You say, "Stan, it sounds like a sales pitch." Eh, maybe a little bit, but it's true. We are a good neighbor. 65% of our 120 facilities across the United States, 65% of them butt up against a residential community. In Arlington, Tennessee, which we call our Memphis facility, we just did a major expansion, 100-door expansion and a lot of work being done there. And we sold the land that abutted up to us to a new housing development and they're building $500,000 to $600,000 homes there. Stan, why are you saying that? You don't build $500,000 to $600,000 homes against a facility or a business that you're concerned about. You just don't make that kind of investment. So you'll see that all across America. Next slide please. That is our founder, Mr. Larry Ralph Larry Roberts Senior. We affectionately call him Senior because that's what he asks us to do. He started in 1965. That is his first truck and you see a hand-painted R&amp;L on the front of the truck in his driveway. We're not actually R and L carriers, although that's what everybody calls us. It's R plus L carriers, but it's not actually a plus sign, it's a cross. With that, I'd like to segue into saying, thank you for the way you opened up your meeting. I travel across the country and hardly anybody reads, or I'm sorry, does the Pledge of Allegiance anymore. There's certainly not much prayer going on anymore, so thank you for what you did today. It's a testimony to this community and another reason we want to be a part of it. Next slide please. That truck that you seen in the previous slide was what he started out with. He was kind of a one-man, one-truck operation for many years and this is the fleet that you would see today going down the road. It's, it has straight trucks, meaning like you would see in a U-Haul, just a truck with a box on the back of it. Then we have trucks with trailers, different-sized trailers, ranging from 28 foot to 53 foot. Next slide please. That was the first terminal, truck terminal in Wilmington, Ohio. You'll see several different buildings there, different sizes, and that was just Senior trying to develop and build a trucking company. And that's where we started at, in Wilmington, Ohio. Next slide please. This is our corporate office in Wilmington, Ohio today. It's the largest cross-stalk facility in the United States. It's 485 doors. We just recently built the second corporate office next to the first one because of the growth. So we've got double offices side by side, a beautiful complex, just, the offices are incredible. It's very appealing when our customers come in to take a look at it. Next slide please. This is an aerial of the site that we're currently at there on Emrick. We've went through some growth here. You'll see the first building, if you look to the left of the picture, that's where the office is, where it says R&amp;L Carriers. Then we had a 60-door facility that was attached to that office. Then you'll see where it kind of takes a bend a little bit because of the layout of the land. That was our second addition. Then we did a third addition and then we did a fourth one. The black roof is actually an existing building that was on-site and we tied it all in. That's why it's not as wide as the other docks that you see. Our standard is to have 100-foot wide dock. To the north or at the top of the picture, right where that black roof building and the first turn, the radius building, you'll see another building that runs north and south. That's our maintenance shop. When you have a maintenance shop that close to a building, you can't back trailers in. So we've lost all operational value in that area and that's another reason why we're expanding. Next slide please. This is the front. The, the back buildings are basically a pre-engineered metal building. The back buildings are basically a pre-engineered metal building. The front is parking lot. You'll see the guard shack, the current guard shack on the left-hand side. We're going to change that location. And another reason that we're improving Minion Road over to the right is because we want to utilize that road and that area for the entrance for the trucks. We will still use this current entrance for employee parking, but no trucks will enter this. We're going to close this off and fence it off. We only want one access into our facility with our truck and trailers for two reasons. First of all, for safety. Second of all, for security. Now, we will put a gate across this current area where the guard shack is just for fire department access, because they like to have a second access so they can go around. So we're certainly going to accommodate them on that. Next slide, please. Oh, can you go back to the one? I'm sorry. Want to say, our docks are a pre-engineered metal building. But the front office that you see there, you'll see it's a different type of material. It's an Eiffel stucco building. We do that to make it a nicer appearance, especially facing the road when people drive by. It doesn't look as bad like it's a truck company. You know, the old trucks and trailers just everywhere. So we put storefronts across the front, and we make it as nice as possible. Next slide, please. The new shop that we're going to demo, that one shop that I spoke about that I said encroaches the terminal, and we're going to put a new shop, and I'll show you where that's at on the floor plan in just a few minutes. But this is what our shops look like. When you tell people where you're going to put a shop in, they get a little scared about the appearance of what a shop's going to look like. It's a metal building with some overhead doors. Next slide, please. This is what the inside of our shops look like. This was taken six months after we opened. You say, Stan, it looks brand-new. It better. We put a lot of money into our facilities, and we want to make sure our employees take care of it. We don't believe in grease and oil. And everything that's involved in a shop is all over the place. Obvious safety hazards when you have that. So I teasingly but seriously say that our safety department, which is extremely large, there's probably 90 employees in our safety department. And I teasingly and seriously say that they're more strict than OSHA. They are often calling me saying, this is not right, that's not right. So we're very proud of that because it's a testimony to our record. We are tracked on an insurance level across the United States. You say, why? Well, let's say that you've got a very expensive item that you want to ship. You're going to check that person out. Everybody Googles everything today. And you're going to check that person out. You're going to make sure that they don't have bad driving records. You're going to make sure that they deliver on time. Because if you ship something, you want it to get there. And that's all rated across the United States. So if there's an accident speeding ticket, if there's an incident, it goes on that rating, and it could raise or lower your rating. So that's why we try to do what we do. Next slide, please. We're going to have a new fuel island. This shows a two-lane. Ours will be a six-lane. Everybody gets concerned about fuel islands. It's very simple. It's a canopy with fuel pumps on the side. There's extreme amount of safeguards, even more than what you would see at a Speedway or any other kind of service station at your local community. We have the special pumps that we calibrate so that whatever tractor or trailer comes up, there's an RFID reader. It knows what truck is pulled up and knows the size of the fuel tank. Let's say that we have the obvious safeguards at our dispensers. The breakaway hoses, so if something happens, it breaks away and there's no fuel spill. But let's say the hose splits, and it does start to spew out. It will only leak out additional 15 gallons because it measures that rate of speed that the fuel's going out. It knows it's different, and 15 gallons. We build a curb around that so it holds up to 300 gallons of fuel. So we're more than safe. Plus, we have the fuel oil-water separators. So we have plenty of safeguards for our fuel islands. Plus, all the equipment is at the highest level of federal and state standards. Next slide, please. This is the inside of our offices. Stan, why are you showing this picture? I want you to see that we make it nice. We want it to be clean. We want it to be presentable. It helps for two things, obviously, the appearance when our customers come in. And then it's a huge morale booster for our employees. You give them a nice environment to work in, they're going to perform better. So we look at all those aspects. Next slide, please. All right. This is a rendering of what we're doing. I'm trying to see here. My eyesight is failing me. So the building that had the black roof on it, we're going to expand that and make it as wide as the other buildings. There's going to be addition, and that's the brighter yellow or gold back toward the retention pond in the back. That's the additional doors that we're building. It's 72, I believe. Is that correct? We've got so many going, I forget the exact number sometimes. But it's 72. We've got the shop that's coming over where Minion Drive will now come. The first thing that our trucks go through when they enter our property is called a safety lane. That's that bay that's building D, I think it is, right there. It's highlighted in black, and it's a very narrow lane. So our trucks, soon as they enter the property with the trailers, they go through a safety lane. There's a staff employee there that checks the lights, the brakes, the air pressures, the tires, everything, because we want that truck ready to go out. And if he sees something, I mean, the littlest thing that's wrong, he red-tagged it, puts it to the side so the shop can fix it that night or that next afternoon. But as you can see, it's a good layout. We're going to have a lot of landscaping. We did do a sound study. And I won't say that was really required. It was requested. Just to show that in good faith, we want to be a good neighbor. The truth is, nobody wants a trucking company in their backyard. Not one person, including the guy talking to you right now. It's just the absolute truth. So what do you do, Stan? You try to make it the best situation as possible for everybody. You put sound barriers in. You do a traffic study. You do everything you can. You create a bigger buffer than what the city requires or the township requires for landscape and so on. And that's what we've done here. Will it cost more? Yep. But this is a good area for us. We could be in Detroit. We could be in several other... And the thought was, would you consider buying land somewhere else? And we did. But we did the marketing. We looked at all the stats of what we'd done and what we've accomplished here. And it's absolutely a perfect place for us. So it's worth investing more money if we have to, to stay in a community like what you folks have. Next slide, please. Jobs. Everybody's curious about jobs. When we first started this, actually in 2019, we were running right around 165 to 170 employees. In 2020, it went up to right around 190 employees. 2021, January 2021, went up to 207 employees. I put down 2,045 for January of 2022 just because we're probably going to break that. We're already at 242 employees, and it's only October. This is very unusual, folks. Down through the years of our company, what we would do if somebody retired or quit, we would replace them. To see this kind of growth is unbelievable. And that's why, obviously, we're doing the expansion and why you're seeing the numbers on the growth with employees as well. Next slide, please. Oh, I think that's it. Okay. Couple of things. One-man, one-truck. We have over 16,000 employees at R&amp;L Carriers right now. We have over 25,000 pieces of equipment on the road. We, as I said, are a good neighbor, but we're a good company. We... I go by the old adage, it's not what you expect, it's what you inspect. Have you ever had a contractor that you called in to fix something, and you expected them to do the right thing? Maybe it did, or maybe it didn't happen. But it was probably more likely to happen if you inspected and made sure they did the right thing. We are blessed with a great staff. We are blessed with just an unbelievable group of employees. But we also inspect them. You say, what do you mean? One of the things that our owner, Larry Senior, has developed is an MDT box. It's a mobile device tracking system. And it's different than GPS. We can do so many things with it. We have a central command system with monitors, I mean, all across the place. We know every truck and every trailer where it's at 24/7. We know how fast it's going. If somebody gets a lead foot, we're going to have a little come-to-Jesus meeting with them and say, hey, we don't need this on our record. You need to slow it down. We'll give them a warning. If it continues, there are disciplinary actions. There has to be. So we inspect our drivers. We inspect the way they treat our customers. We inspect everything about it. But we... Let me brag on the owners a little bit. One of the reasons that we do that is obviously for customer service. But the second thing is, we've got a great company. Larry Roberts, Sr., and here's my bragging part right now. He is the only guy, only company in America that does what I'm about to say. Amazon doesn't do it. Boeing, Microsoft, none of them do it. None of the big companies. He has purchased hotels in four different regions in the United States and turned them into exclusive employee resorts. So if you've got a vacation coming up, and you can afford to get there, you get to stay for free. Right on the strip in Daytona Beach is resort number one, right next to the Hard Rock Cafe. They really got upset with us because we didn't turn it back into hotel and make revenue and tax. So we fought that for two and a half years for our employees so they could have a place to stay for free. If you don't like the beach, Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, right on the main strip, go see the mountains and eat some good country food right down there. We've got a second one on the beach and just north of Myrtle Beach at The Winds in North Carolina. And then the last one is on top of a mountain in California for our West Coast employees in Big Bear Mountain. No other owner will do that for his employees. They won't even do one, much less four. With R&amp;L Carriers, you're getting a company that cares about the employees, cares about its customers, cares about its neighbors, and a company that's thankful to be working at a place called R&amp;L because of how the owners treat them. So that's my presentation tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Are there questions from board members? The local hiring, I know you have quite a few local people working there.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
And that's the goal, to hire locally, I know.
It's not only the goal, we target the local. And here's why. It certainly helps us in several different ways. If we got an emergency freight, an expedited freight that has to come in, we've got all of our drivers out, and there's somebody out there that's close, we don't want them to say, well, I'm an hour and a half from the shop or the terminal, so I'll be there an hour and a half. Sometimes we could go right now. So we target local people so that on the emergencies and everything that's going on, we can get in there closer. Bad weather. You got snow days, and we don't take them off. We got to get there. So it's much more difficult for somebody to drive an hour and a half in the snow than it is somebody locally. So we certainly target for several different reasons.
And the pay scale is pretty... I know it's above $15 an hour for the truck drivers.
Well, it's way above 15.
I know. But could you expand on that?
I will. So our dock workers, which is the ones that drive our forklifts, we are an LTL operation. That stands for less than loaded. Another bragging point on the owner. He always remembers the little guy, so to speak. Meaning, you don't have to have a full truckload to haul with us. We're not going to snub our nose and turn away if you don't give us a full truckload. If you've got one pallet, if you're Jack's Lawnmower Service and you're shipping an engine somewhere across the state or to a different state, and just one pallet will come by and pick it up out of your garage. So why are you saying that? With that said, we look for certain talents. We look for certain skills. Our dock workers start out somewhere between 19 and 23 an hour. And that's our dock workers. Our truck drivers are somewhere around 28 to 32 an hour. And there are many locations. I pull... I do a lot of work on the weekends. I go check out our terminals. Remember, it's what you inspect, not what you expect. So I work a lot of weekends. I'll check out our terminals and make sure everything's good. This past weekend, I was in Richmond, Virginia. And the sign on the front of the yard says $10,000 signing bonus. And I was not aware that we were, some locations, paying up to $10,000 a signing bonus. I don't know what it is here, but I know there is a signing bonus for this area as well. CDL drivers are good. CDL drivers are very difficult to find. We got background check. You have to pass it. We just don't want anybody in our trucks just because you hold a CDL license. So we pay extremely well. We really do.
And as far as the rezoning and reading the information, it was a multiple abutted residential. And I know the residents did not want multiple zoning coming through, you know, their property. And Sally Ritchie is the chair of the Planning Commission.
I spoke to her several times.
And she actually lives in that neighborhood.
She does.
Her comment in the minutes in October of 20 was that all of her concerns have been addressed. So from this board member's perspective, I know Sally lives the closest to it. But I just have one question. The fueling, the new fuel station, it has to be cleaner and better than the one you have currently, right?
Absolutely.
Because standards have improved.
The standards have improved. The equipment has improved. The regulations have gotten tighter and stricter. I don't know if you folks are aware of this, but any tank in the United States that's over 30 years old, whether it's leaking or not, has to be pulled out of the ground now. Yeah. So we're going through a phasing and project that all of our tanks across the United States, anything that's over 30 years old, even if they're not leaking, we got to pull them out and put new ones in. I just finished one in Los Angeles. I'm doing one in Newark, New Jersey, working on one in El Paso, Texas. So this not only benefits us, but it gives the residents peace of mind because brand-new equipment's going in with higher standards and much safer and better regulations.
Okay, good. That's what I thought. So that's a positive, that you're building a new one versus what you currently have. Now, the maintenance facility also has new standards based on what you previously had. And what are the operations? Do you... And I know you did a noise study, and you have a high-wall sound barrier.
It's 12-foot-high.
And landscaping to help deal with that. But are you 24-hour operations?
We are.
And you're currently 24?
We are.
Okay. So that didn't change?
It did not.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. I mean, you're one of the largest employers in our area.
Good.
So when I went in there with the previous planning director when you first, you did your first expansion, it was very, very clean. So I didn't expect that. So it was nice to see a clean... For the terminal to be very clean like that, it was much appreciated. So Minion Drive is in horrible shape.
It is.
So improving that and making that...
And we didn't contribute to that at all. We haven't driven any of our trucks on there.
I know. Yeah, we tried to find the history, and there is a history. But having that as your entrance, as opposed to having to turn left and then turn right to go in, I think is going to be safer for traffic as well.
Again, we're doing something that benefits the township, obviously, by improving that road. We're also improving that intersection right there at Minion and Emrick. We're putting concrete in just because the trucks will be turning there. And as you all know, especially in the heat of the moment, have you ever pulled up to a red light in the summertime and grooves are in the asphalt? And so when it gets hot and you're turning, it's going to chip up that asphalt and do that. So we're putting concrete in there to minimize the impact of that intersection, which will be a benefit to everybody.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to share with the other board members. I was on the Planning Commission when this first came up.
Okay.
And we ask a lot of... And we ask a lot of.
I like your name, by the way.
Well, I was gonna commend you on your first name. Somebody who's very intelligent for both of us.
I agree.
But we ask a lot, as trustee Peterson was also on it. And they never hesitated in any of the suggestions or requests that we made, and I wanna thank you for that. I grew up on Hawthorne in that area. I still have relatives that live on Hawthorne. And when I explained to them what you had done and how you were gonna do it, they were more than happy to have you expand. I'm still back over there a lot, and Minion Drive is just absolutely horrendous. So I thank you for that. I'm also a retired police officer who worked for the city, and I did motor carrier enforcement for a while. And I will tell you that I saw R&amp;L carriers, every day I did it, multiple times, and it was the only trucking company in this region I never stopped because they were always in good shape. So I can't say that for others. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Chair.
Yes. Trustee Peter.
Thank you, Stan. Also, I sit on the Planning Commission. When you came to us, there was a couple of residents that came, I believe, to the meeting that had great concern. I also would like to thank you. The company looks great. I've been out there just to drive around. I understand you need more time. Is that right, Jason? Do some repair on Minion Drive?
I think these folks are just.
Or they're just trying to ask for the.
No, I think that the way that these folks are in position, they're actually asking to get started sooner.
Sooner?
Yeah, so they've submitted building permits to the township building office for review in anticipation of this meeting and then also having a pre-construction meeting and things like that. So they're very eager to get this process started.
And at that last meeting, when it was presented to the board, to the Planning Commission, did we not extend their time for?
Oh, Gloria, yeah. With regard to extending, asking for extra time?
Yes.
Yes, we granted a one-year extension to the preliminary site plan approval and the conditional rezoning recommendation for one year till October of 2022. Just to make sure that we can make these meetings and that the dates would work, yes.
Well, we commend your company. It looks great out there. Also, I had a question about the, I know you have to have CDLs and air brakes and all. Do you do hazardous? Does some of your drivers carry a hazardous license?
Yes, ma'am. If you look in the back of our trailers and trucks, it says we'll ship anything, anywhere, anytime.
That's when I heard you say anything, so they must be doing hazardous.
Yes. But we, fortunately, we're in a great position as a trucking company. You've got good freight and you've got bad freight. And we're in a position now that we're actually picking the freight that we're hauling, again, unheard of in the history of our company. And it's not that we're rejecting companies, but if we got somebody that wants to ship hazmat and it's not properly sealed, it's not properly packaged, it's gonna spill on one of our trucks, and guess who's gonna get the blame for it? It's gonna be us. So we're very fortunate that we can minimize if not almost eliminate those concerns and those issues. But we do ship it. It's all up to federal standards. And to be transparent with you, you wouldn't believe what's underneath your kitchen sink that's considered hazmat today. So I have to say that we ship hazmat because there's so many things that are household items that are considered hazmat today.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, trustee Swanson.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. So I had just a couple of questions. I know one of the reports said that the subject, that the site had five wetlands, even though they were considered not regulated, and that's been confirmed. Were the stormwater areas, are the wetland areas incorporated into that? Or like, how did that happen, like, on the little plan that you showed?
I'm gonna ask Jonathan, our engineer, if he may come up and address that issue.
So your question was what became, what becomes of the wetland areas?
Yeah, so you can't see where the five were, where they were.
Right.
But are they part of where you put the stormwater areas, or?
They're, they were located about where the stormwater areas are, but as they exist now, they will not exist. They were not regulated, so basically they're being cleared for the site. There are, I wanna say in some of the wooded preserved areas that we're not touching, some fragments of those wetlands might be left, but I can't say that for certain.
All right, and then I, I don't know if this is a question for the group, or if it's for you, Jason, but I know with walls, we've had problems where there are unexpected consequences for walls, especially when they're near residential areas. So like the walls that are where I-94 are, where that's encouraged vermin. And then if we're disturbing like a land area near houses and there's gonna be a wall, like, what are we doing to make sure that that doesn't have unintended consequences in the areas where people are living?
So these aren't walls in the sense of like the ones on I-94 to mitigate highway noise. These are wooden panels that are engineered to absorb sound that don't require extensive foundational digging to install. They're more sitting on like a post, more akin to a fence than an actual wall that would require a footing. And then the other part is, is there'll be a perimeter fence that doesn't allow the public to get back where that sound wall is going to be. So there'll be, people will still enjoy that view shed of the woods behind their house, but there will be a fence that limits people from going out because obviously they need their facility to be secure. And so they will have, one of the things that was negotiated was the height of the fence and then also the requirement for barbed wire. The Planning Commission didn't want that just due to the neighborhood feel and kids and things like that. So I believe it's still eight feet tall, but it won't have barbed wire. It'll just be an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence that won't be visible from people's backyards. It'll be behind that land buffer. So people really aren't going to be disturbed all, their rear yards will look pretty much the same as they do now.
We're not anticipating that that kind of a structure's gonna cause the same unintended consequences with vermin that have other walls have encouraged? Because I always thought it was the fact that they get kind of blocked in or blocked out. But the digging makes sense, too. The digging could disturb something and the tunneling and that.
Yeah, and I don't, this fence only runs on the perimeter along Hawthorne. So it's not, it's not like an all-encompassing fence. It's more of just a sound shield on the southern portion of this new development. So I don't think it'll act as a, any kind of a barrier for any kind of wildlife that would wanna go around it, be it, you know, mice or, you know, whatever might still live in the woods behind people's houses.
Then can you explain why that barrier, I can see where it was, like, on the southern portion, you said, but then it's even closer to like where the multifamily housing is, where there's gonna be a berm there, there's gonna be a border, but there won't be any kind of a sound thing? Are we just thinking because it's farther away?
Yeah, it had to do with the, it had to do with the decibels in the distance and then the sound over time and the proximity to the buildings. So the sound study basically stated that the sound pretty much mitigates itself with the natural landforms that'll be on the apartment side, and then the fact that none of that property will be developed for buildings, they won't be driving over there, that over that distance, the sound won't be as loud as the areas that are closer to Hawthorne, where they bump sort of down to the south for those newer facilities, where the sound wall's being installed.
I have a question for you. I thought somewhere in the report, I heard, I saw, or I read, that an expected increase of 40%. Is that the expansion's gonna increase, like, the traffic 40%? Did I read that or no?
No, ma'am, that's incorrect. So what, one of the reasons that I mentioned the trailers earlier in my conversation, people have a misconception that if you have, for example, 100 dock doors, oh my gosh, there's gonna be 100 trucks and trailers leaving the facility. Well, that's not correct. It's right around 60 to 65% of the, a number of dock doors, and this is why. You'll see tractor trailers with a long 53-foot trailer behind them, but you also see double trailers. They're shorter, they're 28-foot, and you've gotta have a door position for each one of those 28-foot trailers. So you've got to build more door positions for the doubles, the sets, if you will. So that's why it's a misconception that it will not increase 40%. The biggest thing that we're increasing is dock space. We're literally having to handle the freight three times. It has to come off of a trailer, get moved over to a corner or a different trailer, just so that we can get different pallets. So the production at our facility here at this location is way down because we're having to handle it two and three times because we don't have the dock space to spread it out so that we can do the distribution correctly.
And not to, and Stan knows his business better than I do, but I remember from reading through the documents that it would be an 80, 80 new doors, dock doors, is a part of this expansion, but there would only be 20 to 30 new trucks utilizing the facility at least in the first couple of years. And they anticipate that there might be more, but that they couldn't make a determination yet because the facility doesn't exist. So that's based on the reports and the things that they gave us at the beginning of the process, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I had a question. And this kind of piggybacks on what Debbie, trustee Swanson was asking. The sound, the sound, not sound pollution, but the sounds that the residents would always hear with the trucks going back and forth, even like in the middle of the night, 3:00 in the morning, it being a 24-hour operation, would that be, how would that be mitigated?
Good question. I need at this point to help explain and help you understand how our operation works. I, with a smile on my face, but serious also, hopefully it's not offensive to anybody here, we're much like the postal service. We think we do it a little bit more efficiently, we hope, but imagine the mailman that goes out and delivers his mailbag. He goes in the morning, picks up his mailbag, he goes out and he delivers the mail. He's also picking up mail to bring back in. So he's got a route and he's gone all day long. It's not like he goes back and forth to the post office several times. He goes out in the morning and he comes back in the evening, exactly the way our trucks do. They go out in the morning, they leave, and the great thing, especially when considering a traffic study, they leave anywhere between 8:00 AM and 10:30 AM. So it's sporadic. It's not like all 100 trucks are gonna leave at the same time. It's sporadic due to the freight that we have on the dock and trying to get it loaded and so forth. When they go out, the drivers are the mailmen. The trailers are the mailbag. They will pick up, they will deliver freight and they will pick up freight. At about 10:30, 11 o'clock, all the lights go off, the dock gets swept. We better hear crickets chirping because all that freight better be moving somewhere. We do not allow or do not want freight to set on our docks for more than 12 hours at a time. If it does, we're not making any money. So it comes in, it goes out. We don't warehouse anything. About 4:00, 4:30, that mailman or that truck driver will start coming back in. The mailman dumps his letter bag into the sorter and they will sort those letters. Well, that's what our forklift drivers are. They're the sorters. They go into the trailers, mailbags, they sort the freight. If you walk down the middle of our truck dock, to the left and right, you got overhead doors for our trailers to back into, therefore it's a cross dock. Above each door has a different city, Miami, Chicago, New York City, Los Angeles, on and on it goes. When that forklift driver goes in the trailer, picks up the pallet of freight, and everything is palletized, we don't do anything by hand, we don't break it down, we don't wanna touch it, we just wanna grab it and go. So he goes in, picks up that pallet, he scans that freight to make sure he knows what door it goes to, it automatically tells him to go to door 67, where the Miami door is, and he takes it there. He'll do that to about 8:30. That'd be the latest that our trailers and trucks will come in. You say, Stan, you said you're 24-hour operation. We are. If you're a convenience store and you only have one or two customers come in between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, you're still 24 hours. The majority of our freight takes place between 8:00 AM and, I'll say, just to cover myself here, 10:00 or 10:30. There will be additional trucks that will come in through the night. Maybe expedited freight came in from Miami, maybe it came from New York City, maybe it came from Phoenix, I don't know. But additional trucks will come in through the night. They will get parked and the freight doesn't get operated until about 4:30 the next morning when our forklift drivers come in. Our forklift drivers come in from 4:30 to about 10:30 to work that first shift, and then they come in about 4:00 PM and work to about 9:30 or 10:00 to get all the freight distributed from that second. Another reason that we're 24/7 is because our mechanics will be changing tires, doing oil changes. So we are 24/7, but there's not gonna be an abundance of freight being worked on during the middle of the night. And I always make this challenge, if you wanna go see for yourself, if you wanna inspect it to make sure I'm correct, you're welcome to go there at 3:00 in the morning and see what kind of activity we got going on. Did I answer your question, sir?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Winters, I know you have reviewed and prepared everything.
Yes, Madam Chair. I think back in 2019 may have been the first time when we may have met with some of the R&amp;L representatives at the development team meeting. And the last two, two and a half years, I know it's been very, very challenging with the COVID and with a number of things that have happened. I think I sent some letters out, I've sent a number of letters out in regards to where we stand with this. And I think it bears repeating that in many, many communities, people are, rightfully so, are trying to attract new employers and new investment. And sometimes, not that we do it, but sometimes you have to also remember those that have already been here and have been here for many, many years and been part of the community for many, many years and have, so the retention is very important as well as the attraction of new investment. I think when R&amp;L first came to the meeting in 2019, they made it very clear that they needed to expand this location, and they had many, many other options. It wasn't a threat or anything, it was simply a fact of life that they needed to expand. They considered Ypsilanti one of their first, you know, prized locations here, and they wanted to expand this location. And as it evolved into more of a rezoning request and a conditional rezoning agreement, Jason and I actually had to go spend a lot of time at the title company just to find out just what's going on with this Minion Drive. And it was a, it was a hot mess as well. And I think we've been in court with everybody along Minion Drive except R&amp;L, because we've always had the best relations with some of those people. But R&amp;L is going to probably expend close to a million dollars in improving and reconstructing that Minion Drive. The point, I guess I'm making right now is that I think the township has done everything that they could do to protect the township board, the residents, the neighborhood, in terms of making sure that everything is actually adhered to, is agreed upon. I think Jason has done an excellent job in terms of shepherding this project through the Planning Commission. And I really believe right now that at least from the standpoint of retention, the township has also achieved that goal. And I think by having high-paying jobs and having skilled jobs, not all of our kids growing up in this area are going to go on to a four-year college degree, but they can have a great career as a truck driver, making very, very good wages and also having good benefits. They'll take care of their family. And R&amp;L has not asked for any kind of a tax abatement or any kind of incentives to do this. This is all coming out of their, out of their own pocket. So I think right now that you've asked great questions. I think, as Stan mentioned, the planning commission and Gloria, they did their due diligence and Jason did as well. Hope to never see another drawing of Minion Drive because that was pretty torturous. But. But I do, I have, I did make a mistake of driving down Minion Drive with a, with a, I almost lost the wheel over there because of the condition of that road. So I'll be glad to see, I'll take up, I'll take Stan's offer up and go over there 3:00 in the morning once that road's been completed. But I do think they've done what they said they're going to do and I think the township is protected and I think everything's in proper form for it to proceed. But I would, again, be remiss not to mention Jason again because he spent an awful lot of time in bringing this project forward. And at the Planning Commission level, there were a number of requests that kept going back and forth to ask for this and ask for that. And to R&amp;L's credit, they never got frustrated or gave up. So I think it's going to be a win-win for both the company and for the township.
All right, thank you. Is this the first conditional rezoning?
Second one. We did one on Michigan Avenue involving the tennis club down there, I believe.
Oh, that one, first one, okay.
The reason why it's called conditional rezoning is that years ago, there were contract zoning as sometimes referred to. Years ago, the township would be requested to rezone property and the person would say, we're going to do it for this purpose. But as you know, once you rezone property, they may say, we're going to do it for purpose A, then they could do purpose, you know, Z, or they could sell to somebody else that was not bound by that commitment. This basically is binding on both sides. There'll be a document, there'll be recorded with a register of deeds. It's going to be one that is going to be inspected in terms of the road being built according to the township's private road ordinance, which mimics the Washington County Road Commission's requirements. And as you indicated, the fire department's looked at it, the Washington County Drain Commission office has. But it's the second one that we've done, the first one that this board has done. And again, it gives us more, I don't want to say more leverage, but it gives us more of a comfort level to know that what is being offered or being suggested or being proposed to be built will in fact occur. Otherwise, if it does not go forward, this property reverts back to the zoning from which it came. And in that regard, as Brenda indicated, there was a time when the owner of this RM2 parcel, Mr. Anderson, wanted to actually expand Anderson Apartments onto that property that zoned RM2, which R&amp;L later acquired. And if you want to talk about a neighborhood coming out to protest, that was, that's why they came out because they did not want the residential streets to be used to access that RM2 property. So when this property was acquired by R&amp;L from Russell Anderson, that took a lot of pressure off that neighborhood in terms of traffic going up and down those residential streets that Stan grew up on. So again, I think everything worked out for a reason and I think, again, I wish the neighbors on Minion Drive would be more cooperative because right now they're not being as cooperative as they should be. But again, R&amp;L's there and they intend to stay there and they're paying a road that they're going to benefit from. But again, I think that just shows the degree of commitment that they've made towards this community in terms of expending a million dollars to, for a private road. Quite frankly, I can't remember any time I've been here where someone has put up a million dollars for a private road. I just can't recall that happening before. So again, I think they've done what they said they're going to do and...
And the rezoning is really for the 8.24 acres for detention pond storage. So I think it's sometimes, you have to get through the weeds to figure out exactly what we're doing. And it's taken multiple, and allowing detention ponds to be located on it, part of the overall development.
Right. That RM2 parcel became an ideal piece of property for the detention basins, which is what is going to, which is going to be used for that as opposed to apartment buildings, so.
And I know the Planning Commission approves the site plan and all of that, and they addressed a lot of issues probably that we were just asking questions on, but where's voting on conditional rezoning?
This is the first reading for the conditional rezoning.
That's what I mean. We don't do them all a lot, but I do like them better than just a rezoning.
It's more of a guarantee that you're going to actually see happen what is being presented to you this evening as opposed to just asking for it to be rezoned without knowing what it's going to actually look like or turn into. And again, a lot of the heavy lifting occurred by Gloria and Stan at the Planning Commission level and by Jason and Carolina Wardman, and we did a lot of due diligence to make sure this was going to be in proper form for this board to consider. And we, I mentioned to Heather before, we made a commitment not to bring anything forward to this board unless everything was in proper form. And that way, when you vote up or down, it's not with any conditions being that you've got to do this, you've got to do that. Those have all been fulfilled, otherwise it would not be before the board.
Got you. All right. Are there no further questions, Claire Crowe?
Yeah, thank you. I have Charter Township of Ypsilanti Resolution 2021-23 in reference to Ordinance 2021-497, rezoning of 1441 Russell Street, parcel number K11-10-160-003. Whereas at its regularly scheduled meeting held October 27, 2020, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission recommended that the Township Board approve a voluntary conditional rezoning request pursuant to MCO 125.3405 for a certain parcel of property comprising 8.24 acres, commonly identified as 1441 Russell Street, parcel ID number K11-10-160-003 from the RM2 Multiple Family Residential Zoning District to the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District with voluntary conditions in writing by the applicant. Whereas the entire development includes three parcels, parcels K11-10-280-019 and K11-10-160-002 are zone I-1 General Industrial. Parcel K-11-10-160-003 is zoned RM2. The developer desires to conditionally rezon parcel K-11-10-160-003 of the property from RM2 Multiple Family Residential to I-1 Light Industrial. The purpose of the rezoning is to develop, develop the property for the primary purpose of expanding the existing use of property as a freight terminal. Whereas proposed ordinance number 2021-497 rezones 1441 Russell Street, parcel ID K-11-10-160-003 from RM2 to I-1 District Zoning Classification with voluntary conditions of, the site will be developed as illustrated on the primary site plan drawings dated 9-29-20. Specifically, one, the existing parcel formerly zoned RM2 will not contain any buildings or driveways. Two, open detention basins and landscaping will occupy the existing parcel formerly rezoned RM2. Three, a minimum pavement setback of 80 foot is provided on the south side of the property, a 20-foot minimum by ordinance. Four, a variable width buffer of existing woods will remain as depicted on the preliminary site plans. Five, 30 additional landscape buffer trees will be provided beyond ordinance requirements along the east and south property lines adjacent to single-family residence. Six, Minion Drive will be reconstructed per the approved engineering standards of the Charter Township of Ypsilanti at its, at the sole cost of the developer. Whereas the Township Board of Trustees agrees that the rezoning is appropriate, now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti hereby adopts and incorporates by reference Ordinance Number 2021-497 attached here to by reference in its entirety. I would so move Resolution 2021-23.
Support.
Motion by Gerald Row, support by Wilson to approve the first reading. We've already had comments. Are there any other questions, sir? Hearing none, we have to do a roll call vote because it's an ordinance and it's a first reading. So Wilson?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Stumbow of Jess? Gerald Row?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
The first reading is approved and thank you for the presentation and we welcome the expansion and increase for jobs for our people as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask one question?
Continue.
You called this the first reading?
Could you possibly go to the...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the key.
You've called this the first reading. Will there be a second reading and what can we expect at that? Do we need to do another presentation or how does that go?
Usually there's no, there's not a need for a second presentation.
Do we need to be present for it?
I would, one person should be at least.
Okay, perfect, I'll be here.
Okay. I would, someone should case residents come and have questions or something.
Fair enough.
And that'll be on 1116.
Perfect, okay.
And I do know that the building official is reviewing the site plan and stuff that you've submitted, so everything's moving accordingly. And based on today's vote, I'm pretty sure that people...
Thank you all very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is a request to approve agreement with the Washington County Road Commission for the installation of speed humps on Nash Avenue in the amount of $53,629, which is budgeted in line item 101, 446, 98200 contingent upon approval of a budget amendment.
Move to approve.
Support Peterson.
Motion Wilson, support Peterson. Discussion? Alicia Dyer had mentioned about the changing of the policies for the road commission. Nash Street has been trying for at least two years and the requirement at the road commission at that time was that 75% of the property owners sign it. And a lot of the people who lived there that were runners wanted to sign, but they weren't allowed to and they supported it. So we requested from the road commission would they consider changing that requirement. 51% is what it costs for any special assessment district, which costs people money, and this is not costing the residents money, it's funded from general funds. So they reviewed it and I was kind of shocked that they agreed, but pleasantly surprised. So there's several, three other petitions that are pending and I think next year we're going to see even more that really want to try to control the speed on some of the residential districts. Can't do them on primary roads, so I guess we'll have to figure that one out. But we have a motion, support. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number three is budget amendment, number 12.
I have a budget amendment, number 12. We have a motion to amend the 2021 budget, motion to increase the general fund by $155,323 to $9,959, $196 and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the fire fund by $3,304 to $4,340,379 and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the bike sidewalk rec road fund by $10,000 to $2,461,528 and to approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the environmental services fund by $5,262 to $3,214,751 and approve the department line items changes as outlined. Move to increase the recreation fund budget by $2,149 to $789,439 and approve the department line items changes as outlined. Move to increase the 14p district court department fund budget by $15,185 to $1,745,968 and approve the department line items changes as outlined. Move to increase the building department fund budget by $7,742 to $881,456 and approve the department line items changes as outlined. Move to increase the hydro station fund budget by $40,922 to $510,627 and approve the department line items changes as outlined. Move to increase the law enforcement fund budget by $9,943 to $8,551,346 and approve the department line items changes as outlined. Move to increase the new sub maintenance fund by $15,000 to $62,027 and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the golf course fund budget by $7,340 to $819,040 and approve the line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the compost fund by $3,975 to $704,885 and approve the line item changes as outlined. And move to increase the motor pool fund budget by $319 to $278,103. I would so move the budget amendment.
Motion Gerald Row, support Eldridge. Questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a request to award the low bid for the purchase of a Ford Explorer to Jack Deemer Ford in the amount of $27,629.38, which is budgeted. So move, Gerald Row.
Support.
Motion Gerald Row, support Eldridge to approve the authorization of bid. Questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's no other business? Board member updates? Are there any updates?
Motion...
Support.
Motion...
Peterson.
Peterson, support.
Wilson.
Wilson to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at 8:26.